We're going to start with public audience. If anybody would like to address the board, you may do so now. You can state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Mike Smith, 44 Climbert Road, Central. And I want to ask a question about what's in the news, critical race theory, is that being taught at Central High School at all?
So, this is public comment, so we don't generally do back and forth with questioning.
Okay.
We're happy to have you make an appointment to discuss that with anybody at Central Office, if you wish.
Which I think he has, so I think he's going to meet with Sue.
No, we have, yeah. Just curious to think there's any kind of...
We can answer any questions that you have.
Yep. So, that's a conversation that is more than a quick yes or no answer. So, I think that's a better conversation for you to have. Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? No mics?
Actually, right there, above you.
Oh, okay. All right, okay. Not that I really care. Let's see. Okay. So, my name is Lori Boyko. I live at 1500 Cursed Road. Eventually, I may get a plaque. So, I'm sure you're all wondering, why is she still here talking about masks again? It's no big deal to wear a mask all day. We all do. Why does she make such a big deal about it when it's in everyone's best interest? I've shared CDC statistics showing this virus does not seriously harm children. I've quoted doctors with credentials. We can only dream of our children having some day. So, why keep beating the same drum? I'm here again because, and I quote UC Berkeley and UCLA-trained psychiatrist Dr. Mark McDonald, who makes the point far better than I can. Our kids are swimming in a toxic, stressful, irrational, dysfunctional, disconnected environment. Kids must have facial expression and reciprocity for developmental growth. Development of language, self-identity, self-worth, and emotional development are all learned by seeing faces. Unnecessary anxiety, depression, and learning disorders are all created not being able to see peers' and teachers' faces, and teachers aren't able to see facial cues in children. Mask mandates are leading to the complete collapse of their psyche and the arrest of their development. The seeds are germinating of a full-blown trauma, the results of which will last for decades, if not generations. Yes, from masks. He goes on to say, "It's really a projection of adult anxiety onto children. It's an abdication of adult responsibility. As older, wiser caretakers and guardians and educators of children of our society, we have a responsibility, a duty, to sacrifice our own interests for theirs." And we're doing the exact opposite. The growth and development of children K through 12 is a one-time process. There are no do-overs. We are wallowing in our anxiety at their expense." Thank you. Thank you, Lori. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
All right. Seeing none, we move on to committee reports and Board of Education communications. Before we start, I would just like to very quickly recognize and thank Karen Handeville from SCTV. She is retiring officially, and she has been so instrumental in bringing all of our town meetings to everybody. And I know that there was a little reception for her tonight. There was also a drop-by at the studios tomorrow for anybody who wants to plop over and wish her well. It's in the afternoon, I want to say 2:00.
Two to five.
Two to five tomorrow afternoon, if you are so inclined. The studios at Eno Hall. But just a huge debt of thanks for this. She's been the station manager there, and she's done such an amazing job making sure our community stays informed. So, a big thank you, and welders deserve retirement. And with that, Olivia.
All right. So, to begin, at Tooten Hills, they held their annual trunk-or-treat on October 29th, and families got to decorate pumpkins, hang out, and celebrate the season. At Squadron, they began collecting non-perishable food items and monetary donations for their Jack Bannon Memorial Turkey Trot. They will be collecting items from November 8th to the 17th, and all proceeds benefit the Connecticut Food Share. This Thursday, November 11th, at Tara Phil, they're hosting a hybrid Veterans Day assembly with in-person singing from their third and fourth graders. Central is also celebrating Veterans Day with a special presentation. If any Central parent would like a veteran to be mentioned in their class, email your child's teacher to honor them. Latimer will also be celebrating Veterans Day with a parade. 500 people are expected to attend with cheering cards and some breakfast to honor veterans, the Latimer Lane Way. The Pen-a-thon is coming up to support veterans at Henry James. The full-year engineering class will be hosting, and their goal is to make over 100 pens. And lastly, SJS hosted a very successful blood drive this morning, and also the CIAC playoffs are in full swing for soccer, volleyball, and field hockey.
And that Pen-a-thon's going on at the high school as well, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This is actually the first year that the middle school will be doing it?
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, so it's catching on, which is fantastic.
I think that's great to see that. It's a great way to honor everybody, and a lot of hard work on the kids' part. Mr. Watson.
I'm all set.
Lyd.
Yes, we just completed a communications meeting previously, and so we are presently embarking in the application process now. Maggie Seidel and Neil Sullivan are going to be looking at some applications because our old Martha Hogan has retired, and she's been with us for 16 years, and she was basically our webmaster communications and grant writer guru for all these years, doing so many different things for us on behalf of Simsbury Public Schools, and great assistance. But she's now going to deserve her retirement up in Cape Cod. So, we have now changed the description of the position a little bit to communications coordinator slash webmaster. And from what I understand, we have some great applicants that they will be reviewing in a short time. And we had discussed, you know, some areas of the position. It will be very exciting. It will give the opportunity for Simsbury Public Schools to showcase and broadcast the good things that are going on with other areas. We talked about particular, maybe an app that one of the districts is using nearby, and a number of other things, and maybe utilizing, you know, our students in school for photography issues, or for capstone, or what have you. So, it's an exciting time. It's always a bid adieu to a great, longtime employee who's done so much for the district, but we do look forward to bringing onboard someone else and bringing Simsbury Public Schools into another era. So, that's what's going on in that department. And briefly, it's always an exciting time of year again. It's the Cape Cops Annual Conference. So, it will just be, it will be one day instead of the two due to COVID, and it will be just about really half the size. But Miguel Cardona, our Secretary of Education, was going to be there in person. Unfortunately, cannot be. He'll be at the White House, but he will just be telecast in. But the theme this year is the future civility, diversity, and student voice. So, we're looking forward to that. And the most, really, I think, the big important piece is the delegate assembly, and that's where we will be discussing for the 2022 legislative session. We have probably about 20 or so resolutions that will guide us now as, probably won't be on the Hill, but, I mean, will guide us through the next legislative year. So, that's what is going on with the Cape Cops Convention, and we're looking forward to getting through some of these resolutions. I know Matt's going to talk about the legislative update of what happened last year, and I think some of the things that we propose for this year may intertwine from some others, but there might be some new areas that we're going to have to explore also.
And you'll vote on those resolutions at the convention?
Yes. So, what we do, the delegates from the districts vote on these resolutions. These resolutions then become our pro forma, our agenda that we use for federal and state legislation, not federal, for state legislation, when the session convenes in February. So, that is what we're going to be using.
Forms your agenda for the legislative session.
Yes, it forms the agenda for all school boards in Connecticut of where we move forward with that. So, and while I have that captive audience, the legislative breakfast is scheduled for end of February. Oh, I forgot what date.
Is it going to be in person this year?
To be announced.
Is that the correct?
Yes, it's the correct one. So, we had a crack meeting last week and discussed this, so it's the end of February. I forgot what date. But, you know, we're hoping for in person, but presently, you cannot enter into the Capitol. Only the first floor is open, but not open for business. So, if we cannot be there in person, we'll have to do this Zoom again. But our goal is to have this in person again, especially, you know, coming off COVID and moving into another legislative session.
All right. Thanks for representing us since they did cap it at a shorter number this year. Appreciate you representing us there.
Yeah, we had to due to COVID. So, like many conferences around the country, they've had to cap them and also virtual. But we are also hoping that, you know, next year, 2022, may be different, and we're hoping that we can get back to where we were.
All right. Jen?
I'm all set. Thank you.
I just wanted to take a second and expand on something that Olivia mentioned, and just the Jack Bannon Turkey Trot. I like doing this every year because he's such an influential member of this community, especially with this board. This of all boards should be, just take a second and reflect. He was a longtime teacher in this community at both Central and Squadron, ended up in Squadron. Just an amazing guy, served on many boards, including the Board of Selectmen, and a veteran as well, just somebody. I just want us to, you know, I think next year, we're going to have to have some kind of challenge, I think, to raise.
Jack Bannon Challenge?
But just an amazing guy. He may or may not have been a sixth-grade teacher, but current member of the board. Again, I just wanted to take a second just to really encourage everybody to get out there and support the Turkey Trot.
And that's always at all supermarkets.
For anybody who wants to support, there are always people at every supermarket in town that day to accept donations. Do you have a date of the Turkey Trot, by any chance?
Oh, like that they're collecting?
Yeah, I feel like it's next Wednesday.
They're collecting at Squadron from November 8th to the 17th.
So, I bet the 17th is the day.
Probably.
Yeah.
It's the next Wednesday, the 17th.
November 17th is Turkey Trot Collection Day. All right. Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that. Sue.
Thanks. Olivia did such a great job sharing many of the Veterans Day activities, but at every single school, there's something very special happening for Veterans Day, a lot of student participation. I love how we connect with our student and staff communities and just reaching out to see who among us has family members, friends, that are veterans, and that's very, very powerful to share. At the middle school, we had a department supervisor work with a local VFW to create a movie of sorts, a video to share with students. So, just a lot of great celebrations and thanks happening on Veterans Day this Thursday. So, thank you for that, Olivia. And just another reminder that next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday will be early release days for elementary schools only, and that's due to elementary conferences. So, again, that's only elementary next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the 17th through the 19th.
Mr. Sullivan.
All right. Just a brief update. In your folders for the Board of Education, we gave you materials tonight related to the governor's announcement from last week of a new policy called Stay-In Screen in the state of Connecticut. This is obviously COVID-related. When a positive case is identified in the school, and we begin our process of contact tracing. So, this is after you have contact traced and identified close contacts, vaccinated kids, as long as they're asymptomatic, are okay to stay in school. So, now you look at your population of anybody who's unvaccinated. Obviously, right now in the elementary, that's everybody, but will soon be, you know, many kids are going to be vaccinated soon. In the middle school and high school right now, it's unvaccinated kids, and then you have to determine, do they meet the criteria where they won't have to quarantine anymore, but they can stay in school and be screened daily for symptoms? And so, there's a lot of detail in here. Sue and I met with our school nurses at 4 o'clock today to talk about how this is going to work. But basically, it's contact inside schools. As long as the parties are masked, the close contact will be able to stay in school, and parents have to sign off that they're doing a daily screening of their child, and as long as that daily screening, that child remains asymptomatic, the child may continue to come to school. So, it's a signal, I think it's a little bit of a signal from the State Department of Ed and the Department of Public Health of looking for ways. We know that the number of kids across the state who were subject to quarantine over the past 18 months was a tremendous number, and I think they're saying, when we know that schools are not a high-risk area for spread, why are we quarantining that many kids? So, it's an effort. I don't think it's a cure-all. You know, basically, I think, middle and high school, I think it's going to work very well to get the numbers down very low. I think it will basically be anybody you might have taken your mask off during lunch and eaten within six feet of, if that person in your group is unvaccinated, they would probably be still subject to a quarantine. At the elementary school, I think we'll still have a few more quarantines than that because in the classroom, there are things that, you know, there's snack breaks and different things that happen. But I do think this will reduce the numbers, and even though it's certainly an extra effort from our administrators and nurses to implement this, it's going to keep more kids in school for more days. And that is, that's a good thing. And so, a lot of detail, I wanted you to get it because we are rolling it out, as I said, with our nurses today and our administrators. And certainly, if any board members read through this packet and have questions, they can reach out to me because we're in the middle of it right now, and I can answer anything.
When does this take effect?
We actually had our first child today that we allowed to stay in school, even though they had been identified as a close contact.
Okay.
So, today was the first one, and we're implementing. Now that we met with the nurses today, we'll roll it out to all of our schools.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Jason?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Mr. Curtis?
I would just add, when, I don't know if people had an opportunity to see the governor's press conference when they rolled this out last Thursday, and I agree with Neil, it's not a cure-all of this situation, certainly, but, and our quarantine numbers have been down. We've done pretty well with it, but the more kids we can keep in school, the better. And I think in the press conference, the Director of Public Health, as well as the governor, referenced a few times that it was a step, what they felt in the right direction to, in a few months, he mentioned a December timeframe. He wasn't super specific, but to talk about where we are with the data and look at and have the conversation about masking. I don't know if that means at that time it'll become a local discussion for us to talk about, or, you know, a shift in his policy, but he did reference that certainly when asked directly in the conference, you know, get through the holidays and then really look and see where we are and have that conversation. So, that's something either that will come from there, or we will be talking about and grappling with ourselves. All right?
All right.
Susan, I actually, I had two COVID topics. The other one is related to vaccine clinics for 5- to 11-year-olds. And the Farmington Valley Health District is sponsoring three sets of kind of two-dose clinics. Ours in Simsbury will be next Saturday, November 20th, at Henry James, with the second dose coming on Saturday, December 11th, so that two weeks after that, you're all vaccinated for Christmas. And there's also clinics in Avon and Granby on other days. They offered 1,200 slots across the three clinics, and the 1,200 slots filled up in less than an hour. So, parents were definitely eager to get that email and get their appointments made, and if we're able to bring on more vaccinators, we may be opening up more appointments, and the Farmington Valley Health District is working on that. But a great kickoff to the efforts to vaccinate 5- to 11-year-olds.
And the clinics are available to everyone in the Farmington Valley Health District, not just Simsbury.
Correct. But they're full now. So, unless we can open up some more slots, and we'll communicate if we can.
So, you need more people. So, anybody in the community who wants to could reach out to you, Mr. Sullivan?
They could. They could do that.
Absolutely. Anyone who's a vaccinator, absolutely.
All right. Good to know. All right. Back to you, Mr. Curtis, anymore.
I'm good.
You're good.
Sharon, not to put you on the spot, is there anything you wanted to share with us tonight?
I do have a couple of things.
Okay.
Yep. So, one is for Sue regarding data, and this is open. Can we get information about Project? Hold on a second, I wrote it. And sorry I'm late, but I had a work meeting. If we could get information regarding data, regarding the number of students that we have that are in, it's at the high school, it's called Project, what is it?
Project Lead the Way?
Project Lead the Way.
For engineering.
Engineering program?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. And I don't know if we can maybe get a presentation on it or something.
Yeah, we've done that in the past. We could absolutely do that.
I'm happy to do that. Is there something in particular you're looking for, or just general information about the project?
Right now, it's general, yeah. General information. And then the only other thing, did we talk about Latimer?
I mean, what's that?
At all? Because I thought we...
It's going to be on the agenda for December to get a little update on where we are with Latimer.
Okay, because I saw the notes back and forth, and one of the things that I wanted to bring up around that is whether or not we have had any considerations around net zero.
Yeah, so that's something that's going through public building, and then there are conversations that will be had here, but again, that's going to be part of our December meeting.
Okay. So, that was the other thing. And then that's it.
All right. So, now we are on to approval of minutes of the October 26th meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the October 26th meeting.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
I abstain.
Okay, we have one resignation tonight that requires board action, and I'll do one of the appointments at the same time because they're related. The resignation is from Erica Morowski, a grade-two teacher at Squadron Line. She taught grade four at Latimer last year during our return from the pandemic, and has at this time decided to pursue some opportunities outside of education, and we have already completed a hiring process. So, you can see below on appointments that Ms. Stephanie Chuffo has been teaching for a number of years in the Waterbury School District, actually. Very impressive candidate with background in reading language, as a reading language arts consultant, and done some really impressive work. And the entire grade-two team and Ms. Evans and Ms. Sims Oliver up at Squadron Line, this person rose right to the top of the pool. So, Stephanie will be in there. I think we made the transition starting last week. So, the motion to accept Erica's resignation is there on your exhibit. If someone could make that, please.
Move that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Erica Morowski effective November 5th, 2021.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then just two more appointments that don't require your action tonight. We already spoke about Stephanie at Squadron Line, but we also have another Squadron Line educator. This is actually a special education job. Megan Lundgren, who has been working up in the Granby Public Schools for a number of years, has decided to make her way down south here to the Simsbury Public Schools.
So far, so.
And again, this is a .5 FTE, but another very impressive candidate. And then at the high school, Baird Faithfull, great name, right? And this is kind of one of those only in Simsbury moments. We had a teacher in the Social Studies Department who was not able to start the year teaching. She's on a leave, and teaches some very complex courses in AP Seminar, and only in Simsbury can you find somebody who has degrees from Columbia University and has taught all sorts of AP subjects in New York State and other places, and is looking for a substitute teacher role. So, Baird Faithfull was available. We did not know whether the teacher would be able to be coming back in just a few weeks, or if it was going to be longer than that. It's now become clear that the leave is going to be longer than that. So, Baird has agreed to stay on for the rest of this year, and then we'll see where it goes after that. So, very lucky to have him.
Much for the substitute role.
I know. I know. Very, very lucky to have him with a tremendous background and experience, and he's doing a great job in a very unique course in AP Seminar.
Great. The .5 special ed teacher at Squadron, what was the reason we needed that one?
That had still been vacant since the summer.
That was a vacancy. Okay. So, we're filling a vacancy.
That was the only vacancy in the summer that, when we opened the school year, we had not yet been able to fill.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's great. All right. So, this next one is mine. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you. I'm recommending that we cancel the meeting that comes two days prior to Thanksgiving. So, I would look for a motion to cancel that meeting, and then we would be, our first meeting would be in December.
Sure. I move to cancel the Board of Education meeting scheduled on November 23rd, 2021.
I'll second that.
Are you cooking, Lyd?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
In its place, we will have the three-board meeting after December 1st.
We do have the three-board meeting, yes. So, please make sure that that is in your calendars.
Yeah, we'll talk about that a little bit later.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll firm up that date before you leave this room tonight. All right. Legislative update, Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I'm actually going to kick this to Sue, but as you know, in both the regular session and the short session last year, there was significant legislation passed that now is in process that could really, you know, impact school districts in a pretty significant way. So, I thought it would be a good idea for Sue just to kind of run through a few of the bullets in the legislation, because many of them do fall under kind of the Office of Teaching and Learning. And we thought it'd be a good opportunity just to give you an overview. We'll certainly come back to these things. A lot of the work with these laws and legislation sits with the State Department right now in terms of formation of committees and putting things together, so it hasn't impacted us to date, but I think it's good to know what's on the horizon.
Great. So, that's beautiful context for this evening. The exhibit that you have certainly goes into more detail, gives you the public act numbers, if you are so inclined to look at a greater level of summary points that's provided in that exhibit. And just know, as Matt shared, it's nothing for the board to act on right now, but certainly different aspects of legislation for which you should be informed. My office will certainly be monitoring all of these developments, and we will loop back to you should there be any developments that you need to be aware of. So, the first kind of category is legislation around mental, behavioral, and physical support. So, in looking at the details of this legislation, it's certainly a response post-pandemically. So, it creates a Commission on Racial Equity in Public Health to look at racial disparities in a number of different places in schools. Some examples are kindergarten readiness, third grade, meeting third-grade reading markers, graduation rates, dropout rates, that sort of thing. And it also requires the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services to increase access to mobile crisis services. So, what does that mean? You may be familiar with 211. And if families or schools are having difficulties with students for any given reason, they can call and access that 211 line, which will put you in connection with a crisis hotline, and they will actually send out people, services, resources, referrals, to help through those rough spots and to link resources with need. And again, it increases access to those services. The second kind of group is around social equity, as well as health and safety. So, as you recall, we had the virtual learning or the remote learning option last year, and this legislation says that the State Department of Education has to take a step back and develop standards around virtual learning in general. So, we will be watching to see those standards develop and then decide what impact... So we will be watching to see those standards develop, and then decide if, what impact that might have here in Simsberry. It also requires that conferences, that there be either a virtual or telephonic option for parents. So in communications, I had mentioned the elementary conferences next week. All of those schools, the five elementary schools, will be offering a virtual option for parents. So that's new, that's in the legislation. It also provides an expansion of mental health services to students in what they can access. More specifically, it creates a youth suicide training program that we will be keeping our eyes on. Certainly, this is something very important to our mental health providers, and we receive this training, ongoing and refresher training, it's a very important topic, but it actually establishes a training program. And there are many additional professional development requirements regarding social emotional learning, so much so that I created this next slide. So it creates what's called the Social Emotional Learning Collaborative to take a look at a number of different things. First of all, it requires an annual assessment of students to really ascertain and screen what students may need, a greater level of care or support when it comes to their social emotional status and learning. So certainly you'll be hearing more about that. It also calls for this collaborative to create standards for grades four through 12, inclusive of supports. They have already established, I want to say back in 2017, K through three social emotional standards. They've been in place for a while, and they said, hey, the four through 12 is coming. Now with this push around social emotional learning, it pushes that envelope to really take a look at what do those standards look like in practice. And it also requires our school resource officers to participate in any kind of professional development or training that we provide with social emotional learning. So we will be incorporating our SROs into those offerings in that process.
Sue, that, so that is, was passed at the last legislative session?
It was.
All of this takes effect as of, or we don't have effective dates yet?
If not already defined, legislation went into impact July 1st of 2021. However, a lot of these legislative bullets have timelines and iterations that expand through this year, next year, and even into '23 and '24. So if there are specific timelines associated, I'll highlight those in the next slides.
Okay, all right.
The next kind of group of legislation has to do with dyslexia and reading, and reading preparedness. So this dyslexia legislation actually establishes a new Office of Dyslexia and Reading Disabilities within the Connecticut State Department of Education. That's already happened. And by this coming January of 2022, the State Department is going to develop a questionnaire relative to family history and reading challenges. What we know specifically with dyslexia is that often you will see a genetic component or a family history component linked to that specific learning need. So this is an actual tool, a questionnaire that can be given, and the State Department is on the hook for developing that questionnaire. By July of next year of 2022, the, this same Office of Dyslexia and Reading Disabilities needs to develop K through three, kindergarten through grade three, identification measures to say, okay, what are some of the flags that we look for in these grade levels to ascertain whether or not students might be more at risk, and we should take a deeper look relative to dyslexia? I am happy to say, I know that in my former role, I've given the board updates over time about our work in dyslexia. We've already developed those internally, but this calls for this office to have state measures to be able to share with all districts, if you don't have those internal mechanisms like we do here in Simsberry. So that'll definitely be something for us to watch and to compare relative to our current practice. The final piece of this legislation around dyslexia is by January of 2023, we, that office needs to develop some guidance around very specific reading assessments, how they should be used, when they should be administered. And again, all of this legislation is to potentially highlight any concerns early on, so they can be addressed and remedied within the instructional program. But again, very specific to the disability of dyslexia. And then finally, the most major impact is that by January of 2023, this legislation requires the State Department of Education to develop a K through eight model curriculum. It's not that you must use it, however, it is developing in all different content areas, curriculum that is certainly suggested and provides a blueprint for districts across the state of Connecticut. What this model curriculum legislation also does is it calls upon the Center for Literacy, Research, and Reading Success to recommend at least five specific reading curriculum or models, this is the must, that must be used by Board of Eds. So what they're finding is that there needs to be a deeper research-based dive into what specific reading strategies, what specific explicit instruction works best for kids in developing their reading skills. So this center is going to be partnering with a number of different research-based agencies to say, we know explicit instruction in reading looks like this, and here are five specific models or programs that we are recommending boards of education utilize. That is, again, not for a bit yet, we're going to be watching very closely. In looking at our reading instruction and what we use, we are very confident that we certainly are on the right track, and I think that that's supported by our reading results that we get with our students.
Would this cause you to pivot from the curriculum we're doing? Or is it simply they're going to recommend five?
They are going to share with districts that these are the five, and you should be in line with one of these five. However, if you're not, there is a waiver, you'll see that is the last requirement of this slide, that by 2023 January, that there is a waiver that a district can apply for to say, we're not going to use one of these five, here's why, here's the background. Again, we don't know what that waiver is going to look like yet. This is legislation, as you can imagine, my office is watching very, very closely. But again, we're very confident in the models that we use, the balance that we have within our instructional models, and once we start getting more information, if there is the potential need to look at a pivot, you will be among the first to know.
We could potentially be using one of the five models they choose.
Absolutely.
Sure. And I was actually at a meeting where the commissioner gave an update, and that list of five may very well be expanded over time.
Yes, that makes sense. So it's at least five to start.
So they're not locked into five, that's what it was at, at the current moment.
We've been here before.
It's a push on the early literacy development, and they're looking for balanced programs and research-based programs.
And there are places that don't have the same programs that need them, so it's important that they do this sort of thing.
No, no, and I'm not saying that, I'm just curious if it would cause us to, if it's, if it's not a recommendation but a command, that would make us pivot to be one of the five if we are not?
I think it's too early to tell.
Okay.
There'd have to be a lot of analysis there and a discussion about a waiver and what we felt and-
But we have time.
We have-
We have plenty of time.
Yep.
We have plenty of time to observe, we have plenty of time to kind of get those details and respond accordingly. But again, I come back to our data, that overtime is extremely strong relative to our students' performance in literacy.
Yes, yes, agreed. Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
So going, I know what you shared about the mental health area, but I've always, how many social, I mean, how many mental behavioral health practitioners do we have?
So we have, I would consider both school psychologists as well as school social workers, so we have seven schools, okay? At the high school, we have two psychologists and two social workers. At the middle school, we have a psychologist and a social worker. And then with your support, we have very much increased the number of social workers at the elementary level. Right now, we have three across five schools. And we have school psychologists at each one of our elementary buildings.
Two at Squadron.
Thank you, two at Squadron. Thank you for that reminder, sir.
Sharon, that very discussion has already been part of our early planning and thoughts with principals and Katie Crisula as well, so.
And I, I mean, I remember when I was talking, you know, coming into the year about understanding that the kids were going to come back in and the needs may be higher. And so my question is really around, you know, I know we have supports in place around for IEPs and whatnot, right? But what about the kids who may come in who are just overly anxious? And then what the numbers, you know, are we looking at that? Because I'm expecting and feeling and sensing that there's a lot of that that's happening.
So I would, I would say the numbers are increasing, we're, we're taking a real look at that, we're having some conversations in the current year, if we need to make adjustments, and we do have that as our funding that we've talked about, so we're currently in process of looking at that. And I do think in terms of themes that we build as we start talking about budget, that we're going to be talking about this area too.
Sharon, the other piece that I will add is that our school psychologists and social workers are not just for students with individualized education plans or special education needs, and they really are serving both general education and special education students.
Right, and, and that I, that I know and understand, I think I'm just wanting, I guess, here's an ask in here, is if we have data to show. Because I'm just going back to what we were just saying, I'm thinking that, you know, we had them in place in general, right? And now we've got this added-
Need.
Need. And, and is that added need pulling on them that we don't have enough? Because kids are anxious, I mean, and things are happening on a daily basis. And those, those folks have their daily workload, right? That they've already had to address, and are they not able to address what's happening on a daily basis? So that's kind of where I was going.
Great, we're already having those discussions, so right in line with your questioning. Thank you.
There we go. All right, anyone else have questions for Sue or Matt? All right, six-year capital improvement plan review.
Yeah, so this is our kind of first blush at this, so what I've asked Jason to put together, as you'll remember, we had Tecton really champion a significant study across all our buildings and the capital needs, both long-term in regards to major facility improvements, and then-
Immediate.
Immediate in terms of electrical, you know, different systems to take a look at. So we're going to show you tonight, Jason's just going to talk through the categories and kind of the, the main areas, and show you what year one looks like, talk a little bit about priorities. We will talk further about the entire sixth year when we get to our workshop later on in the budget process, but wanted to get people familiar with what's on the plan now. Nothing overly exciting, but very important, so. Mr. Casey?
Thank you. So the areas are broken out, the first is roof replacements, so this is on our regular roof replacement schedule. The two schools are Central and Tariffill, so these are partial replacements that we're looking at. So not nearly the, the size and scope that we've seen recently at the high school, but more in the order of a 300,000 replacement at Central and a 900,000 replacement at Tariffill. These are preliminary numbers, we haven't gone through the full process yet, but we do know that the roofs are at that age. The next two items come out of the Tecton Capital Improvement Plan, so they're recommending two schools in particular with their electrical systems, Central Elementary and the high school. Of these two, Central Elementary still has some electrical components that are from the 1950s, actually 1950. So we're talking about wiring that's cloth-covered without a third ground wire in some areas. So this is stuff that if it was in your house, you'd be replacing it, this is certainly a need.
Do they have a fuse box?
The fuses have been replaced, but the breakers are significantly overblown, so for any kind of future expansion in need there, this is something we need to take care of. Similarly, in the basement of the high school, it does look like something out of a B movie, sci-fi movie with the electrical panel down there, exactly. So very aging systems. The next piece we have is some plumbing infrastructure, also from the Tecton Improvement Plan, looking at Squadron Line and Tooton House. Squadron Line is a big-ticket item, their, their, Tecton is pointing out about 1.2 million worth of improvements there. It's a lot of valves and cutoffs and, and the kinds of things that we're spending our plumbing, plumbing repair budget on now. This particular item might be in line for some more discussion, however, since we have been talking about Squadron Line in more of a 10-year view of a renovation. So it's a question as to how much of this do we want to buy off now versus do we want to renovate later? But I put it in to point out that this is an area that Tecton is recommending. Similarly, at Tooton, we have some water issues there, it's a lower amount that they're recommending, but some plumbing work there, so in the order of around 400,000. And then finally, we have our every other year District Network Infrastructure Fund. In the 16 years that I've been here, this has been, this has been an ongoing, coming from the technology background, I would say absolutely necessary expense, where we look at different areas and we keep current. So I'm targeting the Wi-Fi system in the district, it's something that I originally implemented in 2010.
The-
It's in, I would say, certain need of being upgraded. It's not the only piece of the 400,000, but it would be the biggest portion of that. And then there's other redundant power issues, especially in the high school server room that I would add to that. Comments, questions, concerns at this time? I also have a little update on the bleachers, but if there's something, I want to take a pause and talk about the budget.
So that 400 is what we see every other year on the six-year capital improvement plan, just as a reminder for everybody. And then if I understand you correctly, the plumbing at Squadron, that's something that if that project is going to be in the next 10 years, we might-
Might want to think about that.
Do smaller changes or-
Exactly.
And it's-
Because depending on what that design will be, right? I mean, Tecton feels that's a very hard building to renovate.
Right.
And of all the buildings, that might be a new build.
That might be the teardown.
Right. So, and, and the other reality is, right, we, we know we go through the process in tandem with the Board of Selectment each year, and there's a debt service line, and projects need to fit under the debt service line, and there's a prioritization within what we even present. So the one thing that I know Jason feels good about, I'm confident with, we've never had our information laid out as coherently as this because of the study. So our ability to move and analyze things is much more effective now than it has been in the past, so we can have all those discussions as we, as we work through. But these are the needs as they're presented now, and I think it's important that we continue to go back and reference that, right? Because we took a lot of, a lot of time and spent a lot of money for that study, so.
Right, right. So it wasn't, it wasn't meant to be a one and done, it's meant to be a reference document.
Correct.
A working document, yeah, for sure.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions on this for Jason at this point?
All right, and then just an update on the status of the bleacher project.
Oh, there's something in your folders about that, just so you're aware, you look in your folder.
So the next step is we are going through the zoning board of appeals, essentially because the bleachers were originally built close to the setback property line. So now that we're doing a major renovation to that, we have to go back and ask for variance because we're not changing the footprint. We still want the bleachers on the, you know, near the 50-yard line and at that side of the field and-
So the homes on Weldon Way?
Yeah. And we did go before the zoning board on October 27th, they made some recommendations that we're working with the architect on to come back. Essentially, what they were asking for was shorter bleachers that were wider to accommodate the amount of sea- the amount of seats. If you make them shorter, you need to go somewhere to keep the same seat. Reason being, there were some neighbors in that adjacent property that pointed out that there were some trees that had gone down and due to storms, and when the trees went down, the height of the existing bleachers allowed spectators to look into their kitchen, I believe is the exact comment. So it's been a challenge to go back to the architects and try and re-engineer and stay within the budget that the Board of Finance approves. You obviously have a lot of room there in terms of dollars, so it's a question of how do we fit in that footprint? So we go back to the zoning board in a few weeks.
And Jason, have you had the opportunity as, as part of that other meeting to explain to them the storage unit underneath and the difficulty that it sits on that unit and if you alter the...
Yeah.
Okay, they're aware of that as well?
We, we went into a long discussion on that. The issue being that if you do make them shorter, there's a concrete storage building underneath, so you're actually...
Start moving everything.
Well, if you make them shorter, you can't see anymore. So, I mean, the, the, they're irrelevant. So is there a way to stabilize the ones that are there and put this to bed? I mean, if, if we have, if we have a situation like this and maybe we just stabilize the ones we have and move on?
Or can we plant bushes?
I mean...
Can we plant something to block the view?
The issue with stabilizing has been that we can't get any certification company to come back and say that this is within any kind of safety code due to the age. So really, we, we have no option but to tear down and come back.
They gotta come down. They have to come down.
Yeah, and the, the storage location is ideal because it's a lot of heavy equipment that needs to go to that spot. If we do anything with that building, then we open up the can alarms of being in a flood plain area that we would then have to locate the storage significantly in a different location. So it becomes how do you get the roof shorter, which then impacts the garage door style. It's not easy, but we're working on it.
Okay.
Two feet is, just translate that for me, is that literally one row?
I think they're going about two rows.
So taking two rows off the top?
Yeah. And accommodate by one.
That seems like, I mean, I'm not an architect, but that doesn't seem like a huge deal to lower it by two feet. I mean, I've been to probably a couple hundred games there and I've never seen it at 100% capacity.
So the lowering is the two feet of the stands isn't the problem, it's the storage shed. It's like lowering the ceiling two feet.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
How would you feel?
And, and, you know, I don't think we have any problems planting any trees that would grow and be taller in a short period of time. It's, I mean, that's not, I don't think that's against any plants.
I feel like the trees might be the cheapest option.
But, yeah.
Well, it was a request and it's a process.
Thank you for the update, I appreciate the update.
Now, we fully appreciate, because I know that that's...
But I think, um...
Even the last game I went to, so... Thank you, and please let us know how that goes.
We will.
So you're scheduled to demolish them during the, so we would do the work during the winter? I'm not used to us doing any work in the winter.
Yeah, that's, that's the plan if we, if we can move through the zoning board of appeals. The hope is we'd still be able to do this in a December timeframe, weather permitting, so we could get a spring start.
So all the spring sports would have new bleachers on the home side?
Or they'd be in construction?
Yeah.
Can't commit for that timeline.
We can't commit to that kind of thing, come on. Don't make Jason uncomfortable.
I'm going to squirm over there.
Sorry. Just a little squirm. Just a little squirm. All right, all right, all right. Not holding anybody to anything. I know about it. Okay, next up is the budget calendar.
Yes, not a significant amount of information to go over there, but we just laid out the dates for the various presentations. We are going to do the workshop format again, which seemed to work pretty well last year. We'll plan an entire day and we'll just take what we need of that day, but things kind of formally kick off December 1st with the tri-board meeting. I don't know, I asked Amy today if that's going to be in person or via Zoom.
Do we have an answer?
What's that?
I thought, I thought they had said Zoom.
Did they? Okay. She was checking on that for me, I wasn't, wasn't sure on that front.
I had not gotten an answer on that either.
I just talked to Lisa, I didn't get an answer on that.
But before the workshop, we'll definitely have the large presentation, it's an annual review of special education and kind of the themes that we talked about before, when, when Sharon brought up some, some really good questions there. So we will frame out what our thoughts are there, and then Neil, from a personnel and enrollment standpoint, what staffing will look like moving forward in kind of a macro sense, and we will cover new staffing requests at that point. And that really gives us, I think, a base of what the budget's going to look like in terms of main drivers, the largest line items, and we'll have an opportunity to process that before we get to the workshop and give plenty of time for questions and some of the smaller, smaller line items. So timeline's laid out there, I can answer any questions that you have, but it's a...
What kind of framework are you getting from them about what the tri-board meeting's going to look like? Because I haven't gotten any.
Haven't seen anything. I talked to Lisa today, and I know her and Robert are having a conversation, I'm going to follow up with that. I know we provide just some basic fixed costs, that format won't change, and I'll get that to you guys before it goes to them, you know, like what it looks like when our contracts roll over, kind of that one-page format that they always work off of.
I had thought the goal was to have it be more interactive among the three boards.
It absolutely is, but I don't have the structure on what that looks like, but that's the spirit of what they talked about.
Okay.
Maybe not necessarily starting with the target or a bottom-line goal, but more of the various factors that they're looking at and analyzing and assessing, and hearing from us maybe a little bit more on what some of the themes and things that we're thinking about are. So it sounds like it should come together pretty well.
Okay. And if you can maybe give us a heads-up so that we can feel a little prepared before that meeting?
Yep.
So we know what we're walking into?
You got it.
If I haven't heard from the other boards. And that would be great.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Policy second reading.
This is sort of the other half of what this lumpy updated you about with legislative proposals, that some generate long-term looks at curriculum and school improvement efforts, and some require policy changes. So we talked about this a couple of weeks ago during first reading, there were four policies coming out of the recent legislation that needed attention, including the student attendance policy due to the passage of two mental health days for K-12 students across the state of Connecticut, a change to our bullying and school climate policies based on a statutory change in the definition of bullying for, effective in 2021, a change in a policy related to immunization. This was not a COVID thing, this was the other legislation that got a lot of play in the fall, in the spring, last spring, about ending the religious exemption for childhood vaccinations, and only those who are, already have that religious exemption can be grandfathered in. And then lastly, the catching up on the school calendar policy due to the legislation that allowed us to set a firm graduation date. So I presented these to the policy committee, they moved them to your first reading two, two weeks ago. I didn't get any communication from anyone, so I'm happy to answer questions tonight, but if there aren't any, this would get voted on at your next meeting.
So if anybody has any comments for you between now and December 14th, is there a window?
There's a window if you get it to me this week.
They're pretty straightforward though, I mean...
I would have to at least consult with Jen as the Chair of Policy if there was going to be any change.
Right, right, but I'm just saying if somebody hasn't had a chance to read them yet...
Yeah, it would have to be by this Friday.
Okay. So you have homework if you haven't done it?
They're pretty straightforward, I'm okay with them.
Yep.
One, one out of...
One's done.
We all read them though.
Yeah, there was four of us at the meeting.
Okay, cool. Good, great, thank you. All right, with that, we are back to our second public audience. Would anybody like to address the board?
My name is Mark Spelly, 29 natural, I'm really speaking to you tonight in my capacity as the Chair of the Sustainability Committee and Clean Energy Task Force. Some had the pleasure of working with Jeff and Jen and currently, currently with Lydia on the Sustainability Committee. Wanted to just give you a really quick heads-up, the Clean Energy Task Force has drafted an energy plan for Simsbury. It sort of lays out the goals that we'd like to set for clean energy, and we're, we did a draft of it two years ago, we got around to a few boards and staff, I think we sat down with Matt and a few, few others to go through that. We have a revision of that, we're going to, we're going to present it to the Board of Selectmen on January 10th. We'd love to have a chance, and I, and I will reach out to you, but to come present this to you soon. Secondly, I'd like to pick up on something that Board Member Sharon Thomas mentioned, and that is this Latimer Lane renovation. Thanks for a really good collaboration that, that we've developed with Neil and Jason. I've been, I was invited to come speak to the Public Building Committee and then had some meeting, had a meeting with the architects and the engineers and was at the last of Public Building Committee. And I'd like to really encourage you to consider this option of a net-zero building. The, you know, the Clean Energy Task Force does a lot of good things, we've done lightbulb swaps, we've promoted solar, we've weatherized some buildings in town, all of that's great. That will be dwarfed by the decisions that are going to be made for this Latimer Lane renovation, you know, the, the, the degree of building performance, how efficient the actual building envelope is, the HVAC systems, whether we do solar or not, are really big decisions that we're going to live with for 10 to 20 years. And so this idea of a net-zero school, we'd really ask you to consider that. There are two schools in Connecticut that are currently being built net-zero. One is a new school, it's in Mansfield, and one is a renovation, it's in Manchester. So we, we, we have the expertise right in state, we have people we can talk to. It was clear to me from...
Are they all new builds?
The, the Mansfield is a new build, the Manchester is a renovation in addition. And it was clear to me from the last Public Building Committee that the architects and the engineers really are going to look to you for guidance, right? They've done this, they've done net-zero schools, they know the technology, they know Mansfield, they know what's going on in Manchester very well, better than I do. And they, they will do that if we, if that's what we say we want. If we don't, they may or may not. So I would really encourage you to at least act for an option of being a net-zero school, or whether we can do that off of the budget that's really already been approved, I don't think anybody knows yet, but at least pursue that option. It may cost a little more upfront, the capital cost may be higher, but we could literally end up with a situation where we have zero energy expenses over the next 10 to, 10 to 20 years, where we lock them in through a, through a, through a power purchase agreement on solar and we have an all-electric building. So I just encourage you to really give that direction to the Public Building Committee because they're, they're, they're doing the work, but I think it's clear to me, they're going to look to you to say what you really want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, with that, our next board meeting is Tuesday, December 14th, it will be here in the conference room. Please, please, please mark your calendars for the December 1st tri-board meeting. I think it's really important that we are all participating in that. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn. A motion? No, we adjourn. Second? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you all very much.